Um.
Hey.
Just go ahead and silence, shut off our phone. And then I'm the word offender. Um, and please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I would pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think we have any additions or deletions. Uh.
No service wins today.
No. I don't, I, I believe we may be moving that to the next agenda, but we'll just hold off on that decision till later. See if anyone shows up. Uh.
I did.
You're awesome. Um. First item on the agenda is, uh. Did you wanna move hold off on the appreciation certificates as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mental health advisory board application. It's, uh, Matthew Baldwin.
Are you Matthew?
That was right. Got see any, any issues with this one?
Uh, read it. Um. I did not see any issues with this at all. Good experience coming from Klamath and could be a good boost to that group.
Mm-hmm.
What's the name of the individual?
Uh, Matthew Baldwin. Was he, he was at the last meeting? Yes, he was. Okay. But we never approved his membership on the actual.
Yeah, you sat across from him.
Correct.
Okay.
And he's also a retired National Guard officer, which is good, giving him a position in the veterans community. So. Any other discussion on that?
Nope.
We'll move forward on that tomorrow then, I guess. Um, next up, we have an application for ASA Advisory Committee member, uh, Tyson Lane, who's here today.
I'm the new EMS guy at the.
Yes, sir.
You're.
Our new EMS director for ASA number four.
Yes.
Um, do you wanna give us any kind of an update, maybe perhaps?
Uh.
While you're here.
I certainly can.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm kinda dropping on you. He's putting you on his box shirt.
Absolutely.
Just.
Thank you. Um, biggest update is the health district EMS is doing really well. It was really integrated, as far as I'm concerned, really well with the disaster units. There's still one person there. Uh, we are expanding services. We're now offering more and more, uh, ground transportation. It's the biggest hurdle I'm running into there is a lot of the, uh, what we call local doctors in the ER are not familiar with the fact that we can provide ALS ground transportation. And so it's just trying to get the nurses to remind them that we can do that in order to save, you know, a sixty thousand dollar flight versus a four thousand dollar ground transfer. I think that's a much better benefit to the community. Um, other than that, just trying to finalize the ASA plan. Chairman Williams on that a few times now. I'll hopefully go into a meeting, set up the twelve at summer like lodge to include the rest of the, um, the committees and other than that, we're getting ready to start an EMT class here in Lakeview in the fall. Um, I have reached out to the other neighboring ASAs and invited them to send students as well. Cause right now I only have four and my goal is to have twelve to twenty. So if you know anybody that wants to attend EMT, send them my way.
Perfect. All right. Well, thank you, thank you. If you guys have any questions. Um. Any questions on the application? All right. We'll move forward and act on that tomorrow then. Get your approval.
Thanks, Tyson. Thank you.
Um, next up, uh, Jake Greer, Lake County and Klamath County Juvenile Detention IGA.
Now, the company goes have, um, doesn't have the Klamath signature. Oh, this right before the Klamath board last week. And Mr. Golden from Klamath County sent that to me. So I believe that the last, last meeting last month, uh, just kinda give a brief update about detention and our usage. Um. As you can see, the board and Klamath approved it as well as the county council and their department head, which is Dan Golden. Uh, Jim Bailey has seen this. Um. Nothing's changed from last year to this year. Uh, the price remains one hundred and ten dollars per day. It's remained like two hundred and twenty, um, bed days per year. Uh, the total accounts to twenty-four thousand, two hundred dollars. And that's, uh, fifty-five bed days per quarter. Um, to the two hundred and six thousand, fifty dollars. We pay that whether we use the beds or not. Um, and that guarantees us a bed. And we've never been turned away. We've had upwards of three, three individuals free within detention at one time. We had to pay for it, but, um, two of those were natural out of crimes and one was a probation violation for a serious. It was on probation for a serious, um, serious episode. Um, so, uh, we try and, we lodge serious crimes, uh, all felonies, um, on a case by case basis. And then all person to person crimes over its felonies. I say all felonies on a case by case basis, if they steal a ten thousand dollar bike, it's hard to, well, in terms of public safety. Um, who's in risk is the youth of the community or is for toll bike as opposed to a person approaching crime. Um, for serious, significant crimes. Um, but depending on the youth and the history of the youth, we may lodge a tough one for stolen bike. It just depends on the situation, but we'll take those case by case. We try and lodge the most serious, serious folks. During the day we have no free detention. Just to go.
Yeah.
So sometimes we go over, we went over, we went over just this last quarter. Um. Because we had an individual who was charged with a natural out of crime for more than fifty-five days. Um. Sometimes that's not, um, a decision of the juvenile department. That's also, we have the district attorney involved and also have the judgment balls, the court involved. So it depends on, I mean, it involves a lot of people. In this case, the defense attorney agreed that this period of being detained, we had nowhere.
So if we go over our days, we just get charged by the day then?
Yeah, I mean, ten bucks.
Okay.
Okay. So you're pretty confident we'll use the days? It just happens.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to.
Say no.
I'd like to disagree with that, but unfortunately, um, start that history to show we do utilize our beds.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Okay. Well, and we can't house them anywhere in Lake County. And so it's kind of a have to.
Yeah, I don't know how to finish this facility here. And I believe, uh, I'm gonna just say around thirty thousand a year is, is pretty inexpensive compared to John Man is our own.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Jake. Thanks, though. Uh, Anne Crumright, Fund Resilience.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So as a result of both auditor recommendation, our new software, and then our budget process for twenty-one, twenty-two, we chose to dissolve, uh, three different general fund supported funds. Um, Fund One O Five was the communication fund for, uh, radios and towers and things like that, um, law enforcement. Fund One O Six was an insurance fund, different kind of liability unemployment claims, things like that. Fund One O Eight was our vehicle pool. Uh, what we did is the communications, um, fund became its own department within general fund. It's now Department One Fifty Two. Uh, the insurance, um, will now be paid out of central services because it's a countywide central service. Um. Where that fits, we also pay insurance out of individual funds and departments too. So we live in a boat there. Fund One O Eight became, um, Department One Fifty Four within general fund because again, these were all general fund dollars, just split out in their own individual funds. The reserves for each of these, if there was a budgeted reserve, went to Fund One O Three where we have a list of other reserves and different, um, programs there. So this resolution is just the formal action to say yes, as of June thirtieth, those funds go away and the dollars transferred, whether it goes to the operating general fund in those departments or the capital projects fund and reserves. So this is just a formal action.
So which fund are they in now?
So the reserves go to Fund One O Three, our general capital projects fund. The others go to general fund that are in their own departments or within central services in general fund. We did budget that way. So it shows up in the budget that that's how these dollars will be.
Yeah.
Any questions? I hope to get some preliminary, um, yearman reports to you today.
Okay. Okay, thanks. That's good. Thank you. All right. Time for one more. Uh, Third Amendment to OHA agreement. This is another one of the, uh, they're just moving dollars around from one place to another. It decrease in one place and a positive in the other.
With ten thousand or fourteen fifty-five?
Correct. But zero, make, zero negative or positive, I act overall, just moving the dollars. Any questions on that? Okay. Um. We'll move forward on that. Um, Twenty Third Amendment, let's go ahead and get both the OHA things out of the way. Trying to remember which one this was. This is a thing. Now. I think it's showing the overall of all the different accounts. I wish that they at least put the changes in bold. Going through this last week.
So in case you're wondering out there, this is the twenty twenty-one intergovernmental agreement for the financing of mental health, addiction treatment, recovery and prevention of problem gambling services agreement. And it's just swapping from one fund to the other. It's the same amount.
Yeah, it is.
Ten eight one four. Eight five.
Again, it's the exact same.
Okay. So the one got an increase. The COVID nineteen local active monitoring got an increase of four thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars.
Okay.
But those are those same.
Yep. Just the local active monitoring just had an increase of forty, four to three hundred dollars.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Maybe we'll get into it.
Yeah, well, that's, I'll have some time in prison valley, I think. All right. Um. We'll go ahead and move on to our timed item. Um, it is nine fifteen, Autumn Muir and Dustin Gustafson. Uh, proposal to utilize Title III funding in Lake County.
Thanks for having us here. So I typed this up and I'll just kinda basically skim through this information real quickly as well. So I think Dustin and I are attacking this a little bit, um.
I thought you was here for support.
Um, so yes, Autumn Muir, I officially am, uh, with the Lake County Umbrella Watershed Council as the uplands coordinator. But today I suppose I'm presenting the information as an independent contractor. So, um, as you guys know, we completed the top, excuse me, town of Lakeview, like Lake County's prescribed fire, smoke, and public health community response plan that you guys all signed and submitted, um, for that Lakeview smoke sensitive receptor area. Um, the, there's a requirement in that plan that we provide timely, accurate, reliable, locally relevant advanced notification around not only prescribed fire, but also wildfire. So right now, that isn't really, um, that doesn't really exist in a usable format. So what we proposed in the CRP plan was to basically revamp the SCAPUMF website. So South Central Oregon Fire Management Partnership. I didn't get it right. Um, and so basically, you know, that's the inter-agency fire management program that we have right now, they have a website, but it's a little outdated. It's not very user friendly, it's very difficult to find the relevant information. And it's also kind of a co-combination of, um, it's used for the, the agencies internally, but it's also this public website. So there's almost too much information sometimes for people to understand what they're reading. Um, so basically, this proposal is to utilize the Title III funding to revamp the SCAPUMF website. And so we wanna basically provide the community with a one-stop shop. So for all the important key messaging and recommendations for, you know, what's the purpose and importance of prescribed fire? You know, why is it essential to make our forests healthier? When and where is prescribed fire? Plans, you could get advanced notification of locations and smoke expectations and how they might impact you. Strategies that we're currently using to, uh, reduce emissions from prescribed fire, like all of the, um, the forest health thingy that we're doing right now and other ways to, uh, basically minimize smoke impacts for folks that are susceptible to, to, to that. Um, there'll be other air quality index reports, other health impacts from all different kinds of, not just smoke, but other, other sources that affect air quality. And then recommendations of how you can avoid or reduce or mitigate the health impacts, right? So that's kind of the, the core to it. Um, there's a few other things we talked about and we would like to do, um, as far as like embedding interactive prescribed fire planning and implementation maps. You could literally have an interactive map that you could click on and see that, you know, uh, next week there's gonna be a prescribed fires, this many acres. So, um, the impacts of smoke would could be X, things like that. Um, and then a lot of other links to other resources, um, such as the Oregon Health Authority, BEQ, and other, other things that we think people might find valuable and useful. Um, so this website basically would be designed to transition pretty easily between wildfire and prescribed fire seasons. So that all the information and the communication, um, is super relevant and, and, and useful. So, um, for that, we've kind of put together a potential cost, um, the tasks that would need to be accomplished, who would be responsible for that, and how much we think it costs. The majority of the cost for this honestly is just hiring a new web designer. Um, I, I reached out to about four different ones. And the one that I like the most are the ones that did the web design for Ashwin Firewise. They've also completed, they submitted their CRP. So they're, they're kind of just a few years ahead of us essentially. So this company understands what we want, is familiar with the way that we want it to look and the information that needs to be on there. And basically, they gave me a quote for that. Um, but i-in that, you know, we need to tell them what it is we want and how we want it to look. So that's gonna require several meetings and, um, collaborative communication. And, and so that's where kind of I fall into this is that I would basically propose to be the facilitator or coordinator for that effort to get all the agencies and entities together to agree on the product and then communicate that to the web designer. Um, so that's the first part of it. Yeah, unless you have any questions on that right now.
Go ahead.
Okay.
So I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So on the alert, the alert sense, that's gonna be changing after this year.
Right.
We're taking on the Oregon Alert System. Number two is all the agencies on board, not just?
Yes. So they were, we had representatives from all of the agencies as part of the core team on the community response plan. And we've talked about this, decided it collaboratively and put it into the community response plan document. Um, but now that, now that's basically created an action item for ourselves. So we submitted something that wasn't complete yet. So it's kind of hinging on, um, we said we would do this, now we kind of need to do it, and this is our proposal of how to do it.
And so your coordinator costs, is that a one-time fee or is that every year?
No, that would just be one time. Um, the only thing that would be continuous and I, I put into up to three years is the maintenance of a web designer. Just like technical, um, support and.
So what's the difference between the CWPP facility, facilitator and coordinator and a facilitator and coordinator?
Okay, so that's, that's the next part.
Okay.
So rather than coming to you with two separate proposals, we just combine them into one proposal. So, but it kind of fits together. And so, uh, first on the, the website, yes, the agencies all support the revamping of the website. As you all know, when we get into fire seasons, there's, you may see it on social media, there's all sorts of different things and people going to different places. Um, it's kind of an incomplete picture between everywhere. We're trying to bring that picture together in one spot. I think, uh, SCAPUMF is, is becoming more, um, more, maybe people don't know what it stands for, but maybe it's more of a household, uh, name anymore. People know what it is. And so, um, trying to just, rather than going a little bit of information on the county website, a little bit on the Lakeview City website, and a little bit on SCAPUMF and wherever else, just try and get it all in one spot. More consistent and easier message to reach everybody. So the next part of this is the CWPP, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And, um, so back in two thousand and eleven and it got finalized in two thousand and twelve, um, there was a revision to the CWPP for Lake County. Um, and I don't know when this original CWPP was like two thousand and seven or eight, maybe? Six, if I'm right, somewhere in there. So over that time period, it kind of defines what, uh, what the wildland urban interface WUI is for within the county. The communities that are at risk to wildfire, kind of ranks them and how much at risk they are. It also identifies, um, critical infrastructure within the county and also, um, the CWPP group even in two thousand and eleven and twelve took a little bit further and kind of, we identify those critical values in a sense, uh, whether it's commercial timberland or, uh, critical sage grouse habitat, things that would have major impacts upon the county and the economy of the county if they were impacted from wildfire. And so our, our CWPP is a little bit broader since the, maybe what you'd see around the city of Medford or somewhere else. But, uh, as you know, our wildland inter-urban interface is somewhat limited from the traditional sense of homes in the, in the wildland. But there are so many other things that could have detrimental impacts upon the county as a whole if event of a wildfire were to, um, run through or burn that area. And so with that, I, and then also another part of the CWPP is kind of an action plan of projects, uh, to help, I guess, kind of a strategical look how to, how to protect those, those values or those, those wooey areas, um, whether it's, you know, landscape scale restoration out in the forest or, uh, designing a fuel breaks or, um, you know, maybe it's, uh, fuel breaks along evacuation routes or something in that sense. Um. That's one area that we didn't put a, I mean, we touched on it in two thousand and twelve, but but I wouldn't say it was real comprehensive as far as where that's going and. And so this project, this proposal is, as you all are aware, I don't know that we have a lot of change or development in WUI. Um, our suburban and suburban areas aren't expanding too rapidly in this county. Nor really are our values really changing that, that much. So I don't see a real need to, to redefine what we've already defined as the movie or, or those critical, uh, infrastructure values. This project would be specific to updating the action plan, getting all the agencies and key partners together, looking at the communities and, and planning out the next round of projects for the next five to ten years. Um, I'd say in the last ten years since this, uh, CWPP was updated, um, if you're where we, all the agencies, partner agencies and cooperators have really progressed quite a bit as far as landscape scale restoration and different, implementing different projects on the ground. So with that kind of new focus of where the partnerships, the shared stewardship agreements and partnerships are taking us, it's time just to get that action plan, uh, up to speed. And then where that comes into play is when Autumn or the Watershed Council puts in for, maybe it's the, the fifth grant through OWEF, um, for the next landscape to treat. We can reference that this project is identified within the Community Wildfire Protection Plan and that it isn't just one person sitting down pulling this idea off the shelf. But it was, it's been a plan in the works and, and that we're trying to get somewhere there. Group this collaborative, we identify and we need to get to. So, uh, basically, the, this line item CWPP facilitator coordinator is just to build a higher autumn to get the meetings, uh, coordinated, facilitated, uh, capture the projects and then pull it all into a comprehensive list so we can get approval, uh, which the commissioners are all approvers of the plan. So it'd be an addendum to the plan and, uh, get it updated, uh, so we can move forward.
The county just went through this process, right?
A couple, three years ago, two, three years ago, maybe two years ago. So it's just, it's time to relook at where we, and we're ten years kind of out of date. It's just.
Right.
Time to get it back up to, up to date and looking towards the future. And then help, uh, leverage, um, get some grant dollars and use the plan to help leverage some of those funding sources.
So to answer your question, they're very similar, but they do have different outcomes. So it would, it, that's why we kind of have it as two different line items. Because, uh, there will be a lot of the same partners, but I don't know that I can do it all in one meeting. So I think there'll be like a SCAPUMF website meeting and then a CWPP meeting. So that's why I've kind of separated. But they, they, everything dovetails together, so.
And as you probably all are, are all aware, Autumn has a wonderful track record for managing. And as you probably all are, are all aware, Autumn has a wonderful track record for managing these sorts of projects and also has her fingers in so many different aspects of natural resources around the entire county that I think it's a natural fit for her to be the facilitator for all the agencies because she has these relationships and, and knowledge of what's going on across the entire county or maybe more evenly pull that together than say just myself who's somewhat siloed or, or others. So the county's, uh, skin of the game on this is we need an updated CWPP. It will help, like I say, chase more dollars down the road so that we can do more, uh, defensible space projects or, you know, you name it, things that will help out, um, our landowners right now throughout Lake County. Update the map, make it better. We may be missing places that we hadn't thought about in two thousand eleven, stuff like that. And also then having this one-stop-shop website for smoke, uh, again, contains with that Community Response Plan commitment that incorporates all of us. Might wonder why the county is being asked to pay for its SCAPUMP website, but, uh, Title III dollars, I think, fits that. And, uh, that's basically our commitment to help make sure that we do have that website up and running so that we can get that CRP, Community Response Plan, one-hour exemption.
Right.
For future prescribed burns and whatnot that will protect the citizens of Lakeview. So that's why.
Yeah, because it, we will have to do an annual report. Um, so the CRP was submitted, I think it's under review right now, or is it just the one-hour exemption part that's under review?
One-hour exemption.
Okay, so the CRP was submitted and in a year we have to provide an annual report. And if we haven't addressed the thing that we said we were going to do, then we definitely will not be continued for our one-hour exemption, which is super important because of all of this ongoing effort to increase the case of scale of prescribed fire. If we don't have that one-hour exemption, we will not be able to do what we need to do to get the landscape in a healthy state. So it's just all, it's all snowballed in together.
So what's the town of Lakeview skin of the game? Uh, they are a signature of the CRP and, um, I don't know what their commitment is other than they support it. So future maintenance, we probably can discuss that someday.
Of the website, right, so I've, I've filled in for three years.
Fifty dollars a month.
The fifty dollars a month, um. But yeah, I think this will be the heavy lifting, you know, just kind of getting it. Because the current web designer, I should say, is, um, has moved to like Australia or something and wants to retire. So it's also a good time, we're not kicking anybody out or, you know, it's just a really nice time to do this transition. But I think once we kind of get it established and, and get the whole revamp done and run it for a few years, it, it might be significantly less and maybe someone, some physician at the Forest Service, a fire information officer or something like that can.
Can take over.
Can take it over.
What would you need? So who's gonna be the facilitator for these next three years?
Me, probably, yeah.
So, once again, we go back to that one question, that's, that's a one-time payment, but do you not want to get paid for the next three years?
Well, I don't know how much it, I mean, if we're talking like, you know, a, a phone call, you know, once every three months or something, I think that's just part of what helps facilitate all of the other projects that I do. So I, I don't know how to, um, quantify that, so I don't want to ask for something that I don't know how much time it's going to take.
The other piece is the federal agencies have skin of the game. And maybe they can pay for future maintenance for this, you know, you organize that's for the money upfront.
I feel like we kind of, we have a really good idea, but we need to dive into this to figure out exactly all of the pieces. I, I think we've got it covered pretty well and that's why there's a range from, you know, three to forty-five or, you know, there's pretty big ranges on here and I think that's all because if everything goes smoothly, it could only cost this, if it becomes very complicated and convoluted and there's things that we weren't anticipating and might cost this. So like trying to cover us there, but, but this is kind of the first, the first initial attack, I guess. So I'm not saying that we wouldn't come back in two years or three years and say, okay, this is what we've done and now we know we need X to continue.
I would suggest then just keep us, keep us informed as we go forward and to get a better idea as we go, what it's gonna take in future years.
Yeah.
And like Commissioner Schillerberger said, you know, federal agencies have skin of the game on this as well. So for future maintenance and keeping it going. Yeah.
All the SCAPUMP partners, actually.
Yeah, all of them.
Mm-hmm.
Including the town of Lakeview. So we'll just.
Well, it's a, it's a good proposal, I think it's an appropriate use of Title III dollars. I think our Title III fund certainly has enough money in it. But it's, I guess up to the group, we're gonna approve it or not, but, uh, I recommend that we approve it.
Uh, one last question on the facilities coordinator, um, and on technical assistance, there's a little bit of a range of what dollars might be necessary for that. So I'm curious on what we'd be being asked to approve tomorrow. Is it still a large number or a small number? Which way you're going and, and I suppose I'd be kind of curious, what's, uh, are you, how are you charging for your time? How are you penciling that out? Is that just kind of, are you giving yourself some play there or are you giving us some play?
Well, um, so for my independent contracting and what I charge for the Community Response Plan is fifty dollars an hour. And so basically I just keep really good track of how much time I'm spending on that particular project. I send an itemized, really detailed, um, timesheet and invoice to Ann, that's how I did it for the CRP. Um, for this, we were trying to figure out, okay, we had X number of meetings, those are four hours apiece, plus you gotta do a doodle poll and a Zoom invite and, you know, it's just kind of trying to figure out how much time it would take. And then capturing all those notes, typing it up, you know, following up with action items and who said they were gonna do what and, you know.
GIS mapping.
Yeah, all, all of that. So, so I wasn't sure because I haven't actually, uh, requested a proposal like this from you guys. Is it easier to ask for more and then not spend it? Or is it easier to ask for less and then have to come back and ask for more?
That's where I was going, cause I'm curious if, if we say approve sixteen, six hundred, um, and you end up not having to spend all that, we would put those dollars back into the Title III dollars.
That's what I would do, yeah.
Yeah.
I would recommend that and then back to your question of, you know, the maintenance and per time, if there's time in years to come, if that doesn't get spent, then maybe that dollar is still here. I think that, I think that's how it's gonna be, is make the contract for three years. Because that's what your fifty, your fifty bucks a month is going.
Yeah.
Get rid of the fourteen thousand one hundred and just put the sixteen thousand. Request that amount, and that way it just covers you for the next three years. And because we can't, we can't sign a contract that it's gonna be fourteen to sixteen, so just make it sixteen, we approve that and then, um, and you'll have some operating capital for the next three years. And then that way you don't have to come back because it's a lot easier doing it first time and then not coming back. You know, you never know with your, you never know with the next order, that might be a different board.
Sure.
Yeah.
And they might say no.
Might be a couple of errors, you never know. Just on the technical assistance then, would, are you comfortable with going to twenty-two hundred? With a plan with Watershed partnership?
Well, the thing I would do is the total request is sixteen-six.
Yeah, but that's because it's including the, that's calculated at twenty-two hundred instead of the twelve hundred.
Right, and so what I would do is just make it the sixteen-six, whatever you need.
Okay.
Don't do these, it might be this or might be that, you know.
Okay, I apologize for that.
No, it's all good.
But yeah, I just, I would assume it's going to come in less, but I just want it to be.
And that money will sit with us and then they bill it.
Right, right.
Cause they need it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's not like a, you don't cut me a check or something, I bill and we, you know, invoice it as we go.
But we'll budget basically say sixteen-six hundred.
Plus you see us quite often, so keep you updated.
Right, yeah, just build it in your own internal budget, you know, just.
And just, uh, I guess the very last paragraph there is just talking about the timeline. And so obviously we're in wildfire season right now, so we're not gonna do anything. We're not gonna ask, let's start, start reading about this. And so, I mean, probably late fall, maybe early winter, November, December, we'll start our meetings, start communicating with the web designers and, and they just need a little bit of time upfront, um, to know that we're hiring them and get that on their schedule. But they said right now they're about a month out after their contracts are signed to start implementing work. So the goal is to have the SCAPUMP website at least pretty much going in the revamp phase by the spring, two, two. And then I think also the CWPP will be updated at that point. So we're hoping to just kind of work this out, being super like, super, um, positive, uh, in, in the wintertime. Um, so that by the time we get back into our field seasons, it's, that's right.
And with the CWPP, uh, in the past, we've had a commissioners part of that group, uh, would be Commissioner Schumer or one of the others, or. Commissioner Schumer.
Most likely, yeah.
So when we get that group together, we'll be happy to help out him. Since we both helped with two thousand eleven.
Yeah.
I, uh, I was thinking yesterday as I was watching fire from the MODOK slowly come our way, that not only do we need to worry about SCAPUMP smoke, but we need to worry about our neighbor's smoke. Uh, we have that alert system, well, there, looking at models, whether it'll make it to us, et cetera, et cetera. And we just had all that smoke from the lava and tenant fires, you know, blasting.
Which, uh, just a separate note, if we're finished with this, we do still have, oh, I don't remember the exact number. I wanna say it's forty-eight or forty-four HEPA filters that were part of that Community Response Plan, um, that we didn't distribute during our HEPA filter day and I've kind of been waiting for the smoke to really hit. I almost thought about it when that last smoke came, but, um, just to think about if we get a series of days with, um, smoke intrusions, that would be a really good time to advertise and try and have another HEPA filter day. So just, you just need to live in Lakeview, be like older than sixty-five or have a health condition or kids under thirteen and you qualify for these free filters, so.
You gotta live in the town of Lakeview.
You have to live in the town of Lakeview because that's the.
Our pine grove and Westside residents don't get a benefit from that.
They're not technically within the boundary of the Lakeview smoke sensitive receptor area.
Which is all of their growth boundary.
Pretty much, it's the, and I think on the east side it goes a little bit to the ODF boundary. There was something weird on that, on the east side along the Warner's, but.
I thought if you were in the valley, it was good, a good ingredient, right?
We were trying not to turn anyone away, let's say that, um, but technically.
Yeah, we're trying to emphasize the town.
Right.
And I understand they're, they're the boundary, but.
That's where the smoke issue is, was in town.
But like yesterday, I drove down pine grove and back and it was pretty smoky down there and wasn't smoky down here. So the smoke went west.
Well, and that's something we can just advertise on our new website. Here's a great product that you can purchase at this discounting rate because we have purchased, you know, a hundred and fifty of them and if you, you know, look at this website and see that smoke is coming, that tells you, close your windows, turn on your HEPA filter and you'll be able to breathe better. You know, it's education and outreach.
How many filters did we get? It was like a hundred.
Hundred and five.
Hundred and five, we're down to forty-some left. You know, I think we, it's kind of hard to go out and ask for more money and more filters if we can't even.
Use up the.
Use up the ones we have.
Where the dollars come from, where we get those.
That was through DEQ and part of the CRP grant, um, for developing the CRP. But I think, what I'm thinking is we can get the rest of these filters distributed and then, um, because that grant was specific to the, um, the town of Lakeview and the sensitive area of the urban growth boundary. And so there's no reason we can't go after more though. And I think with that, over the Senate Bill seven sixty-two, the wildfire on the west bill, there's a public health piece in there, um, as well. I would anticipate that they've seen some more dollars come available for such things that, uh, you can reach out.
I think.
Partners can reach out and try to get more, address more areas.
I think it was just really difficult, um, to get people interested or excited about smoke in a beautiful bluebird day patrol in, in Lakeview, you know, I mean, they're just like, what is this again? But if we do it when there's an actual active smoke event, I think so.
I do have a few people asking.
Yeah, and we have a shortlist, so, yeah, but instead of just like going them out one at a time, which takes a lot. We're just gonna do one more state distribution day.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Couple more items, ODOT agreement, number three five oh seven zero. This is the discretionary grant award. See this? By Autumn.
So this is about the senior citizens parking lot. Uh, paves it, new sidewalks, install lighting, upgrade security camera system and put in a parking structure to help protect the buses. We've already done the paving. There was no match required for the grant, we got forty-nine thousand six hundred. So when we approve it, it's pretty much a slide up.
Yep, yep. Next item, plan of late guardianship program and contribution. Discussion.
So we got, uh, we had Charlie Twain, another person come in asking us for contribution to this in the past, earlier this spring. I don't believe we ever made any action on this.
Do you guys want to?
We talked, we talked about it.
Yeah, a little bit.
We talked about. When, when we talked about previously, it's a state program. And I just have problems supporting state programs. If they put the programs out there, the state should fund that. And not that we, we don't need it, my problem is is that the states support their own programs and so, that, that's my hangup of the thing. So is this the one where I believe, uh, Lake Health District contributed thirty thousand? Lake Health District what? Contributed thirty thousand, yeah. Did Clamath County contribute?
Yeah, I think they did.
Pretty big chunk on this.
For their guardianship program, yeah. And I think SkyLakes contributed as well.
And I'm not saying we should, my my hangup is the state, so.
What would you be interested in contributing?
This guardianship program already been going on. On and off, on and off. I mean, we could consider finding it, seeing how it goes this year. Tell them that we're on the fence in the future, whether we will support it or not.
Then kind of maybe contribute.
I don't know, they did though.
Maybe it would be helpful to know what they did.
I think it's more.
They have what they have.
We did too.
Yeah.
I don't want more people.
Yeah, you can proportionate that.
Yeah.
Look at their population and use compared to what might be used in Lake County countywide in this proportionate in some level that they did.
One, one uh one word, we're, fellows to start too, is that we match what the health district did. I'm not that interested in doing that myself, so.
Maybe a portion of that or something.
You guys tell me.
I don't, well, you know, I
Do you want to know all the numbers that that their entities?
Maybe it would be good to get some information on what Clamath County contributed. And then we can kind of get a better understanding of that. Because I'm I wasn't sure when it was first brought to us whether or not I was comfortable contributing. Back then, it's probably why we didn't put it back on the agenda.
And do they have details for you of what they're going to use specifically, the funding for?
Yeah, we got briefed on it a little bit, yeah.
So just the monetary amount?
It was good discussion, but I don't think.
We just didn't take action, now they're asking again.
No, we didn't follow up. And I I, if my memory serves you right, I don't think I was very um keen on jumping out there and putting more money into it. We were still going through our budget, not knowing where things were going to be. But um, because I I'm 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 not sure we can do thirty thousand, but.
And where's where where are we gonna take it from?
Yeah. I mean, our contingency, you know, is pretty limited. And uh, I'm not sure economic development dollars would be appropriate use of that. There's lottery dollars, a lot of those things are very they're discretionary, but only some discretionary.
Yeah, lottery dollars are maybe for economic development, so.
You can contribute to projects through your um your actual commissioner, but do you have the project plan in there? I think so.
I think we need to have them send us a proposal if they want.
Well, they did make us a proposal, I mean, well, it's.
Writing it.
Well, I don't know if it was writing that, it was it was.
I mean, make our fairgrounds in the North Lake Christmas Valley, give us a proposal before we give the money.
Trying to think whether or not there was something in writing. And I have to go back and look, I have those meet, I have minutes from that meeting in my office.
Five thousand bucks, because that's what's sticking in.
Yeah, something like that, I think you're right.
But, but something like that, but.
And that's that's probably a more palatable number for me, if we were going to like the contribution.
I just wanna like what Commissioner Schulmberger said, you know, give them a certain amount, they could go up or go away. You know, uh depending on how they're on their program.
Could you get um the youth investment involved in it? Um like they fund, but they fund the mentor program through some of those dollars?
Well, it's not, it's not just for, it's not for youths, apparently, it's it's for guardianships, a lot of the elder folks, seniors, yeah.
Oh, it's for all guardians, so. But health, and the ones that have health issues and.
Go on everybody to check out.
And they have no one to manage their stuff and.
The the working system. Yeah, I I know, um.
They come into the hospital.
I worked with um Linda at the health district, um the little gal that tries to sell all the pop holders and stuff. Um, yeah, uh no, um Linda worked at, worked at, Linda Mike's in at the hospital, yeah. She was the guardian for the gal that walks around all the time trying to sell the pop holders. And um she also did some um the gal that sells stuff, she did some uh work for Lake County, it was been a lot of years ago. Um and I followed up with her all the time on her pay. And she got her pay correctly, Linda did, and then they would give her her money. So we had interaction and and I know she did a lot of work. And I I don't know if she did that for free out of the, you know, I think she probably got paid to do it.
I think a lot of it. Wow, yeah, I I don't know.
She basically did all of her, you know, gave her a certain amount of money every week to do what she needed to do and then, but she made sure she had the groceries and her thoroughbills paid and all of that. She didn't just get her paycheck, we had to give it to Linda Mike's and then she then took care of her needs. But I'm guessing that's the kind of program that this would go under then.
We just need to look at our notes.
Yeah.
We've been briefed. So we know exactly what it is, we just, we should have added it in these notes this time. I should have added it to my own, so. Kick myself for not doing it.
I'd be fine with something probably a little bit more between thousand, five thousand or something like that, I think it'd be, I'd be more comfortable with that. Um, you know, I mean, honestly, you know, like Commissioner Albert's at your point about, you know, being a state program, but they're not well funded. But yet we can go and get a grant with no match for fifty thousand dollars to go build a farm for the senior center or for the senior buses. But the seniors are the ones that were supposedly trying to help out with this. And they can't contribute enough to just operate the program. They don't even require a match to build a building.
But with that said, and honestly, totally what I've been saying, but with that said is they shouldn't have to suffer because the state isn't.
You're right.
And so I came to help support the program and see where it goes, you know, and five thousand bucks is a good starting point and that can go up or it can go down, you know? What do you think? Trying to remember what Clamath County gave, but it was a bunch. I wanted to say it was rent seventy, yeah.
They have like a population that's around sixty, almost seventy thousand and we're.
They're closer to eighty.
Or, I mean.
But I I know, yeah, the uh.
It's fine.
Yeah.
Not trying to compare, but I'm just saying. Uh I agree, and it's whatever number you guys want to support, whatever you guys, you guys want to do, so.
Probably more than anything, we'll just see if we can find an appropriate place to take those dollars. And where we where we can, where where do we want to pull those from? And then we'll grab those notes and we can even maybe bring back for agenda tomorrow. If we have some of those notes and we can maybe even improve something then. If we can, and we'll have some more discussion.
We're comfortable.
Yeah, and uh, but if we have a place that we can pull those dollars by the end of today and by tomorrow, then yeah, we can we can look forward to something. Yeah, even even up to ten thousand might probably be comfortable if it was. If uh whatever budget we pull it from can sustain it. Okay, any other discussion on that? Our next two items are also um folks want money from us, so uh JV transferred from Economic Development Fairgrounds.
Ratification, so.
Yeah.
Assist fireworks.
Yeah. Um we can take action on that right now and ratify it.
Do we need to do the same in Christmas Valley?
Uh, this is, it's the next item, it's separate. Um, I actually was wondering if we wanted to delay taking action on that until tomorrow when we're in Christmas Valley.
But it's not a ratification.
It's not a ratification, no, alright, but we'll be making a contribution.
Yeah.
I don't think the checks have been cut yet on that one, so.
No, that's my notes.
Right, the other one was, so correct, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, um.
Did you want me to make a motion or not?
Sure, I'll entertain a motion.
Makes motion to ratify um the thousand dollar donation to Lake County Fairgrounds, the amount of a thousand dollars.
Motion on the table?
Certainly.
Motion is a maiden second to approve ratification of the transfer of a thousand dollars to Lake County Fairgrounds Fireworks. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, but I didn't ask for other discussion, any discussion?
Yeah.
Sure, go ahead, you should learn from your Monday policies.
Well, my notes say that that's coming from Fund Two Fifteen Economic Development Lottery dollars.
Right?
So everybody knows, so a thousand bucks.
Yeah, good, good. So, next item, Fourth of July contribution, Kristen Valley, Carson West.
We'll do that for.
We can do that tomorrow, um my letter to Karen, Karen came on, you know, not too long ago, so she probably wasn't aware of the fact that we'd done this in the past. So um, we got behind. We didn't settle on a number though, do we want to make it the same?
Make it the same.
Just make it the same, alright.
Do they have the fireworks?
Yeah, they did have the fireworks, it was a really good show, it was very impressive. And I actually, I think the cost was about ten thousand dollars to do the fireworks. They said it was the best show in a hundred mile, over a hundred miles. So, and that was including that, they said fireworks are better than that, so. I'm not trying to throw the shoes counting under the bus tonight, you're really good.
So, do those add in?
Yeah. Okay. Um, any other items? Um, I did not get um Jim Bailey on the phone, um my dad, uh he said he was we just texted him and he would call him. Um, does anyone wanna maybe get Jim on the phone and ask if he has any legal updates? Are we good, you guys wanna follow up with them separate?
So to you, I I'm pretty briefed on where we're at with things.
Right, you good Mark?
Yep.
Alright.
So on the ordinances, don't we have to have the open that up to public discussion or public?
For comment, yeah, we'd be taking comment tomorrow on all those hearings.
Okay.
Twenty-seven six, uh one sixteen. Fifty-two, one, two, three, and fifty-two, four oh two.
Okay.
So.
I didn't know if you did have to do it on work session, um so.
No, we'll just be doing it for the regular session.
Okay.
Uh, my understanding.
I see that he's got the ten thousand dollars to make there on there for utilities or if one irrigated or historically irrigated land.
What's that one? Oh, on the fifty-two, one, two, three?
Yeah.
Yeah, he does have that one there, or do you guys wanna have him, well, we can't have any discussion on that. Good, we just don't have a hearing.
No, that's. So is this the last hearing?
No, we have another one. So. That's it, that's it, alright. Yeah, unless there was anything else, we use on updates or anything.
Oh, the nuisance, that's tomorrow too, correct?
Uh, yeah, all the nuisance stuff is tomorrow.
That I have in there. Okay, I do wanna bring something up on the nuisance I got called today from the Christmas Valley constituent saying please do something. He didn't use those.
I think I know who you're talking to, but it's okay, but.
They really need the help.
Yeah.
And so, um can we talk about when we're gonna hire?
Uh, you're, you got liaison updates and stuff now, so I think that it's appropriate to fall under that. Maybe any discussion?
So Jay Collins is out on vacation until next week. Um, my thought would be Jay gets back, we have him over to that position. Go from there, that's cool with you guys?
It's fine. And you guys have the other issues that we talked about though before, where those worked out? Um, department head, um who the department head would be, um.
Can he sort of be the department head? I don't know if I've actually officially told him. I told those guys to work it out between them, neither one got back to me. I won't make that exactly decision, I don't think.
That's basically what I told them as well, I said, either you guys work it out or we'll make the decision for you. And.
Why would you put, I'm I'm sorry, I may be overstepping here, but why would you put something that is all about land use and ordinance and related to land use in the building officials stands?
Well, that's been part of the discussion. And that's why we wanted.
There's a mixture between planning and enforcement, so.
Right, and so they do, they do touch, they they.
Your issues are with what people are doing and not doing with their land. And how the law and with land use and what it can and can't tell some private individual what to do is.
But a lot of the land use issues that we're having, they aren't just land use, they're also co- planning and building issues. So they kind of, they cross over and we've discussed having multiple department heads over this individual. Having two department heads, and I mean, Melanie does it with us, having three department heads, but it's still, it creates some confusion, so we just have to make sure that we're going in the right direction. And uh, they didn't get back to us as to how they wanted to do it, so we're just gonna make decisions.
Well, that position have the um flexibility, let's say, um like myself in dealing with all the financial aspects of our office. Have the latitude of, um, something might take twelve, fourteen hours in that day because of whatever happens. But the next day might take, you know, eight hours. But when you're out there dealing with the public, you could be, you know, in two days you've spent twenty-four hours working with one person. I don't, you don't wanna run into a bunch of overtime.
There's, there's, there's flexibility.
In an exam situation or.
There's no really, there's no. There's not gonna be overtime, there's no reason to be overtime.
Yeah. They're, they don't need the overtime, I mean, there's, but the flexibility itself is, you know, just when the job's done, it's done, and when it's not, you have, when we have, when it hits five o'clock, first goes home. That's the way it is.
So that department head's gonna have to.
Department head has the management. So. Alrighty, um, any other discussion?
Are you gonna be going home tonight or what's your plan for the travel tomorrow?
I'm probably gonna be going home because I'm sure in sheep at six o'clock in the morning, most likely. Um, and then I'm going to be headed back up to Kristen's Valley after that, or probably before I'm done.
Make sure you're traveling.
Yeah, I'll try. Yeah, I'll try. Might just space the chairs a little bit, you know, if you have to. Hey, you know, when the teachers are, are headed this way, we.
Yeah.
We work around their schedule.
Alright.
So, you guys are coming up in the category then?
I should be there. Hey, I got an update on broadband.
Sure.
Last week, uh, I had a meeting with Betty Radley, let's go ahead, and Mary Holt's paying. Now there's a hundred and twenty million per broadband for State of Oregon. And it looks like they're not going to uh, having that money hit the street until next January. So.
January this time?
Coming up January, yeah, twenty-two. So, one of the goals for Lake County is that we want to have a master plan. We've had some discussions about that. We want to ramp that up a little bit. Make sure that we try to get a master plan in place, broadband across the whole county. That way, when money is ready to start being distributed in January. We can be asking for actual implementation and not uh. Doing a, a study in the dark, yeah. So, anyway, we'll keep pushing for that. We need to know what the price tag is for master plan, we need to.
So did we, are we gonna have those? Those one guys that were here to do that master plan or did we decide that?
Depends. We may have to put it out for bid or we might be able to go third party.
Things like that, just what we were trying to do back in two thousand nineteen, talking about putting something out to bid for bid for a master plan or something, something, but it just never came about. Barry's been really proactive on it. Yeah.
So, stay tuned on that. Uh, Clamott County has a lot more infrastructure, you know, up and down ninety-seven. They just don't have a good plan either. They're trying to figure out what they're gonna do, but. They're also, SGOA has money, I guess is what I should be saying, uh, they may be able to help fund some of that master plan work. So, we'll keep continuing to talk on that. We're gonna be again in a couple weeks. And we'll be meeting, hopefully Betty will be meeting with our committee. Steve Mayers, Ken Casker. Just myself. Who else in there? Anyway. That group.
And Daniel's supposed to be on it.
Who?
Daniel's supposed to be on it, but I don't imagine he's made any of your meetings, yeah.
Never seen him.
Yeah, so. I got him, I got him to come to a couple.
Um, the other deal is I sat in on the Sage Con uh, meeting last week. I was the uh, commissioner rep for Sage Con meeting. Uh, we did have local, uh, Delancey John O'Keefe was on the call as well, and uh. One of the things that I brought up was I was concerned about um. The rule that uh, sage brush was considered sage grass habitat, no matter where it was. And I told him that that wasn't gonna work. I since had a phone call with Nigel, can't remember his last name, but uh. He says that the BLM has a general rule that sage brush is general habitat adjacent to lec. And I guess um. What we're trying to determine is, you know, what is adjacent? Things like that could be used by sage grass now or in the future. You know, that's why they have such a big broad statement like that, so. My concern was if we're gonna have future economic development and we've got sage brush. Now we have to consider first sage grass. Now that may be the case. Um, some businesses may have to do that where if they're right next to a lec, a known lec area. That was something they'll have to work out, but we all know that not all sage brush is sage grass habitat. So, I was just trying to stick up for that part of it. There's gonna be some turnover with that Sage Con group. Um, the leader of it is leaving Sage Con and going into marine work, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Mark Bennett, Baker County Commissioner, has been the uh, commissioner rep on that. He's the one that called us, but I sit down because he couldn't.
Mark's very knowledgeable on that sage grass issues. Yeah, you know, I've been trying to figure out what actually classifies as a lec. Me and that, I've got a lec right above the Summer Lake subdivision that supposedly encompasses the half of the Summer Lake subdivision. That lec has been gone for years. It was completely burned out along with all the sage brush above it, but yet.
There's still an empty port.
Still on the maps, so, you know, we, we play the game because there's sage brush all over the place, you know, that somehow we're doing sage grass mitigation. But because of a lec that's way up on a hill that got completely burned over several years in a row, basically. So, a little, little fuzzy on this. That actually does lead me into another commerce, another topic I just wanted to. Let you guys know, Korea has reached out to me, uh, Community Renewable Energy Association for Oregon. And they've asked me to sit on a. On a. In a group with ODFNW and some other county commissioners who are from across Oregon. And I think this all came about after the Kirk Downey versus ODFNW. Issue that came, that was in the papers a couple weeks back on an appeal that went to Lupa and then back to Kirk County. On a solar, uh, renewable energy um, application. And so they're just trying to really iron out a lot of the issues that county governments and ODFNW have been having. Um, Darwin Johnson and John Muir and I met a couple weeks ago and had some discussions about the maps being used. Um, so that we're clear on exactly what maps are supposed to be used. Um. Because we were looking at several different overlays that were not. To quote Mr. Schillerberger, weren't going to work. So uh, anyway, I'll let you guys know how that is. We have a meeting, uh, they want to meet virtually um, July twenty-sixth. Um, and uh, I'm trying to get us to have a in-person meeting. Um, right now, I believe Les Perkins out of um, Cliff River County. And some of the other renewable energy coordinators and stuff from around the state are going to be there along with ODFNW. And whatever other commissioners want to participate. But I'll let you guys know how that's going to go, but it's uh, the whole mitigation conversations can be kind of a big one. So. Alrighty.
Only other update I have, uh, did go to air quality being on the twenty-ninth of June. And the town of Lakeview had a real good average for air quality this last winter. This last year, they averaged twenty-two uh, micrograms. And you know, the threshold is thirty, so that was good. Three-year average is now twenty-five. So, we've been hanging in there pretty good. Every winter when we have wind, which seems often, uh, that, that's good. When we get into those stagnant winters, that's when it's real tough, but it's hard to get the smoke circulated out of here, so.
Do you see on that, do you see a potential of them lowering that threshold?
Um, I don't know. I, I don't want to guess, but they ask.
Well, they, they've been asking us to lower our threshold. The, my curiosity is whether or not they're trying to lower the threshold to.
We don't. What they're trying to do right now is things they can't control. They've had a fair amount of wood stove changeouts and they want to have future wood stove changeouts, you know, so. That's, that's a big one, so we're gonna keep doing that, so.
Okay. Sounds good. That's all I got. Anything else? Alright, um, we'll go ahead and adjourn the, oh, uh, just a little bit, people adjourn. Um, we're gonna move uh. Service pens and appreciation certificates to the next meeting.
Like tomorrow or?
That.
No, to the next meeting in two weeks.
The next regular meeting.
The next, uh, well, the next work session, most likely. Alright, so. Sounds good. We'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting in ten twenty.